Since it's six o'clock, I'll call to order the Charter Township of Comstock Planning Commission, and if you would join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda from last, or no, just the approval for tonight. Do we have any additions or changes?
We do have two additions. One, Mr. Sherwood cannot be here today, but he would like his letter discussed that he submitted to you all. I don't know where to put that at, potentially under any other business. And then, we also can have a discussion on a potential joint meeting between the Moratorium Committee and us. That could be during Planning Commission in your comments, or any other business. Is there a preference?
I would say maybe we put it under other business, or old business, even if we just bring up best under old business, and we can keep it relevant.
Works for me.
What were you suggesting for Sherwood?
Any other business.
Any other business?
Yeah, I didn't see a better idea for that one. I don't know quite where to put it in.
Chair, I have one thing I'd like to add.
Okay.
I'd like to put it under new business, and we'll do it last after the re-zoning. Discussion on moving citizens' comment to the beginning of the meeting, and then possibly a second one at the end, like we do at our township board meetings. So, under new business.
Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, the approval of the minutes from June 12th, 2025, meeting minutes. Any changes or mistakes?
I just have one thing, I don't know if it's what's not, but Greg Nowak, he's our vice chair, I just wonder if it should say vice chair there, for the members present.
No, actually, that's Bob Sherwood. He's the vice chair.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who the vice chair is.
I believe Bob is vice chair.
Yeah.
So you want that after Mr. Sherwood's name, then?
Yeah, I guess, yes.
Then I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as recorded.
With the correction of vice chair?
Yes, sorry, with the correction of vice chair after Bob Sherwood.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, under new business, is 4964 Batonkill Drive, special land use request in public hearing. Is anyone here for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Would you like staff to give a rundown first?
Yeah. I'll have you speak in just a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we've received an application for a home occupation at 4964 Batonkill Drive, in order to operate a acupuncture, massage, place, home service, is really what it is. So going through our report that we've done in the past, most of you are familiar with this, special land uses do have standards we have to meet, you know, is harmonious with the zoning code. We found that, based on our review, it is harmonious in the sense that home occupations are allowed as a special land use in that district, so they do meet that requirement. Harmonious with existing character, based on the information provided by the applicant, we don't find that any modifications or detriment to existing character of the residential area are anticipated, so therefore that provision, we believe, can be satisfied. You know, essential character, is it going to change the essential character of the surrounding area? Home occupations are permitted as a special land use, so when the ordinance was adopted, there was foresight into reviewing and approving home occupations, so it was already kind of established that that was a potential permitted use as a special land use, so therefore we didn't find it to be changing the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, based on the information provided to us, hazardous or disruptive? Based on the information provided to us, with the hours of operation, how many clientele they're looking at, we did not find it to be hazardous or disruptive to the neighborhood. And then adequate public services and facilities? Again, based on what is being proposed, we did not find that a detriment to public services or facilities would be undertaken, given the items under question. There are additional use standards for home occupations, which are listed in your report. We've gone through and included the table here. Some include conducted entirely within the dwelling unit, does not involve employees other than persons residing in the principal residence, it's incidental and secondary to the principal use, that being residential, does not endanger the health, safety, and welfare of any other persons residing in the area, no article or service is sold or offered for sale on the premise except as produced on the premise, shall not require internal or external alterations, may have one non-illuminated nameplate or signage of two square feet. There's also, it does not meet the, does not meet the standards of eight here in the report, which defines what home occupations are not listed in there, and then home occupation, that meets all the criteria above, does not have a sign, so forth. In short, we found that what they are proposing does meet and comply with the zoning ordinance, and staff is confident with the application at that time. However, because it is a special land use, it does require a public hearing, so we would, you know, request that the Planning Commission hold the public hearing, take any citizen comments that may or may not be presented at that time, and then deliberate after the public hearing, and make a decision from there. Because this is a special land use, if the Planning Commission does wish to move forward tonight with a recommendation, you will need to waive the provision of the bylaw, it has to be all unanimous. In that regard, if not, we will move this for deliberation to the next meeting, which is July 10th.
Okay.
Questions from the commission?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you guys, anyone have questions for Kyle?
No, I thought the packet was pretty all-inclusive.
Joseph?
No, no questions for Kyle.
Patrick, or James?
No questions for Kyle.
Sandy?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chair, would you like to invite the applicant up to further delivery?
Yes, Mr. Flynn, would you like to come speak to us about this?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to be able to discuss this with you a little bit. It was never my intention to build a business in my home in the first place. I worked for a health and energy here for 17 years out of Battle Creek in Kalamazoo, and after that, I went to Granville to work with Dr. Auburn at the clinic, excuse me. And when I went to Granville, of course, there was a lot of people that I had known here in the area that couldn't get to Granville. And so they asked me, is there anything? I said, well, I don't know, I guess you could just come on over. I got a portable table, and I carry a bag with all my stuff in it, you know, and I said, well, that'd be wonderful. So, most of these people I've known for 20-plus years, they're like family now. And so I opened my home up a couple days a week, and if they called, then I allow them to come over and come on in, and I rarely do more than three people in a day, and everybody I know, and they park in my driveway, and that's about it. And it never occurred to me that I was doing something wrong, so I have to apologize for that. But, so, that's about it. I would just love for you to allow me to continue what I've been doing for 17 years. I've been doing this there, and I don't have a sign anymore. I took that down because I was upset a little bit, you know, scared a little bit, when I got approached by the ordinance officer. So I just took the sign down, and that was more for people to be able to look and see where I was, because they'd drive right on past, you know, I'd come on the corner, they'd drive right on past. So I took that down anyway, it wasn't to try to build a business. So I would appreciate it if you would allow me to do that, and that's about all I have to say, unless I can answer some questions for you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Flynn?
Nope.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
I'll open it for public hearing at this time. Do we, yeah, do we need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I move that we open public hearing on the special land use permit at Batonkill.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're now open for public hearing. You may speak. Only one time, for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen, or extended their time, to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor, and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board members, but you are welcome to make appointments with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful. We are open for a public hearing.
My name's John Powell. I live at 4930 Batonkill. I'm actually Greg's neighbor. So I just wanted to point out, being his neighbor directly to the south, you know, I think during Kyle's presentation, that there was some kind of discussion about, are we keeping the character of the neighborhood? Is there any kind of real disruptions? And I can attest, again, I think our houses are 50 feet apart, that, no, there's never been any issues with that. My kids still play in the yard, you know, never any problems, no disruptions. I've been there since 2016, and it's just never really been an issue, so just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
I'm Eva Goza, and I have known Dr. Flynn for 11 years, I went to him, and I feel like he's an outstanding citizen in our development, and it's not his main office at the home, it's just a part-time office, and there are many people in our township that work from home, and so, and he doesn't interfere with anyone in the neighborhood, it's, so I think he should be able to continue doing what he's doing.
Thank you.
My name's William, I feel like he's been doing it for 17 years, and his residents around him don't have a problem with it, I don't see why it should be a problem to go ahead and approve and let him continue working.
Anyone else? And I'd entertain a motion to close.
I move we close the public hearing.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're not, tonight, we're not able to vote on it, unless we unanimously vote.
Unless you vote to waive your bylaw.
Right.
Which requires you to wait till the next meeting.
Yes.
Does anybody have concern with raising, with waiving the bylaws?
I think I do. Not anything specific to this case, but as a policy, we seem to have established that as a habit, and if there isn't a pressing issue here, I would prefer to leave the bylaws in place.
Okay, we need a unanimous vote to do it, so I guess we move on.
I think we can have discussion.
Yes, we can, I'm sorry. Amber?
Yeah, to me, I don't see any concerns, and when you read Ordinance Standard 8, which is the only one that Kyle has indicated doesn't specifically say complies, right? Nowhere in there, I mean, acupuncture is not listed as a prevented home office, nor is like massage therapy, which I would liken to it. It does say no medical clinics, but Mr. Flynn has said he's not practicing medicine, so to me, there's nothing that says we can't move, that we can't allow this, so that would be my position.
Yeah, and I
Joseph?
Yeah, I don't want to communicate that I am opposed to this, just because I prefer to follow the bylaw and delay. I see no particular problem with, you know, approving this home occupation.
Jim?
I see nothing wrong with this at all. I'd like to see this move forward, so I'd like to move on there.
Sandy?
I appreciate you coming before this board. Whether or not somebody turned you in or not, we do have a lot of home-based businesses in this township, and, you know, maybe they'd get more business if we knew they were all there. So I do appreciate you coming before the board, and I do not have a problem with it either. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. I don't have a problem either, I think, as long as home businesses don't interfere with their neighbors, I don't see where they create any problems. We have a lot of daycare homes in this community, and they have tons of kids running around, but, yeah. So, I guess, that's all I have about it. So, we will see you next time.
Mr. Chair, there was no motion to move forward or to not move forward.
Oh, that's true.
So I think that's your next discussion point.
Yes.
So if someone would like to make a motion to waive the bylaws, they may, or if not, then we will see them back July 10th.
Would, would we like to make a motion to waive the bylaws?
I don't think we're going to have a unanimous decision on that.
You can try.
You won't know until you try.
Fair enough. Mr. Chair, I move that we waive the bylaws and consider voting on this special land use permit tonight.
Support.
Okay, I think we're going to do a roll call here.
Okay.
Jim?
I think you better have the attorney say what we're voting on, like she usually does. Okay, sorry, I was asleep at the switch. The vote would be, if you vote yes, you'll vote to waive the bylaw, and so you can proceed with a decision on this special land use application tonight. If you vote no, it would be to not waive the bylaw and to require that this come back to the next meeting.
Roll call vote. Seems like I'm missing somebody.
You only got five.
Yeah, I know. Larry, Jimmy, Sandy. Amber?
Yes.
Joe? No. Larry?
Yes.
Jimmy? Yes. Sandy?
No.
Okay. Okay.
So the next meeting is July 10th.
Okay.
Discussion.
So, do we have, are we able to bring them back July 10th?
I believe so. The public hearing was set for today, we had it already, so we can bring it back and discuss, and make a decision.
Make a decision on July 10th.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We will see you then, Dr. Flynn, on July 10th at 6:00 PM. I'll send an email and agenda, once we get closer to that.
And thank you for coming. Okay. Next item on the agenda is 6668 East ML Avenue Re-zoning Request. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've received a re-zoning request for 6668 East ML Avenue, to go from R1A single-family, which is the existing category, to AGR agricultural residential, located on your screen. It's an approximate parcel size of 15 acres. The applicant has also provided additional information as a handout from Casey's email here, for you as well, of what they intend to do on the site. Current zoning and surrounding zoning is R1A, as shown on our zoning map here, the excerpt of it. The property is denoted by the red star on your screen. There are listed, you know, permitted uses within the R1A and AGR district, so as in past cases, any, you know, if the re-zoning is approved, any use permitted in the AGR district would be allowed. Same thing with special land use, is subject to approval from the Planning Commission. The site is surrounded by R1A single-family district uses, and then to the north on our future land use map, is considered suburban residential, with the subject site and properties to the east, south, and west, all shown as agricultural. So the application is supported by the Township's Master Plan, future land use, and that's the 2030 Vision Plan. So there are considerations we have to look at when doing a re-zoning. One, whether the re-zoning is consistent with the policies and uses proposed for that area in the Township's master land use plan. We find it to be if, and we find that it is, due to our classifications in the map districts of AGR for that region, in accordance with the 2030 plan. The second item we look at is whether all the uses allowed under the proposed re-zoning would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. Again, we note that it would be, however, I did highlight in your packet that, as in past cases, should the property be rezoned, any use listed within the AGR district would be allowed, and then special land uses are a different consideration. So just because a applicant does state what they are looking to do with the property, any use listed, again, is permitted, so I do want to clarify that. I think we've had some concerns from residents on past applications, so I do want to just bring that forward again, for the benefit of the audience and group, and anyone watching. Three, whether any public services and facilities would be significantly adversely impacted by a development or use allowed under the requested re-zoning. We did not find that to be the case, based on the information supplied. However, any future use allowed within the AGR, if they require site plans, would then at that time be reviewed for compatibility. Four, whether the use is allowed under the proposed re-zoning would be equally or better suited to the area than uses allowed under the current zoning. You know, within our master plan, there is a list of future land use designations, what the primary compatible zoning districts are, and then potential compatible. So the future land use does call for this to be, again, you know, agricultural in that essence, and so the primary compatible zoning districts would be under there as agricultural residential, so it is compatible in that regard. Some recommendations and findings afterwards, we find that, you know, the four criteria, if they are agreeable to the Planning Commission to be met, you know, possible consideration by the Planning Commission would be, one, Township's 2030 Vision Master Plan classifies a subject site and surrounding land as agricultural, so it does meet that provision. Two, the permitted uses within the AGR district appear to be compatible with the character of the area. In terms of special land uses, further review analysis would be required on a case-by-case basis to determine compatibility, and what I mean by that is, every special land use does have its own criteria, it has to go through for review by the Planning Commission. Three, while the application does not speak to public services, the indicated intended use is not anticipated to negatively impact the subject parcel, nor the surrounding land uses. So subject to your public hearing, as before, the Planning Commission can deliberate and decide from there of how you want to proceed, but in essence, again, it is compatible with the master plan of the township.
Thank you, Kyle.
Of course.
Maria?
Yes.
Would you like to speak to this issue?
Sure. Thank you for letting us come and talk to you. I put as much in as I thought, and then if anybody has any questions they would like to ask me. I owned the property along with my husband, and we also, he's also my business partner, we own the Victorian bakery in Kalamazoo. We've lived here in Kalamazoo for 25 years. I swore, because we'd moved from Kuwait, I swore I'd never move again, and I saw the farmhouse, and that was it. It took me about three days to convince him to move. It's, it's an absolutely stunning area, it's gorgeous. The forestry in the back has not been looked after, I spoke to the neighbors, there's a lot of apple trees, a lot of cherry trees, we want to get somebody in to have a look at them, see if we can save them, there's, it needs a lot of regenerative work done to it. It's great that it's fallow, but the trees are so big that we've started taking down a lot of invasive trees. We sort of worked where nobody saw what we were working at, to start with, when we moved in last autumn. We built a pond, or we didn't build a pond, we got a pond dog, and the idea is that we'll stock it with bass, and we can use the water in it, also on the fruits and vegetables. I want to bring in provincial lavender, because we make lavender shortbread. We get most of our fruits and vegetables that we use from Michigan, so the lavender I'm bringing in is seeded and grown in Michigan. The rhubarb plants arrived right yesterday before the meeting, they're also coming from Michigan, so anything that we're putting into the farm, we're getting from Michigan. We, I have my site set on a hoop house, to start, do seeders, seed starting, to sort of extend the fruit season, so getting fall, late blooming raspberries, and, which not a lot of places around here grow because they are so late, and this would be something that we could do. The thing I'm most excited about is the rhubarb. It's weird to get excited about rhubarb, there's nobody in the, in this, in the Midwest, or on the eastern west coast that I can find that is forcing rhubarb. This is huge in Europe, forcing rhubarb. They do force celery in Michigan, but nobody forces rhubarb. And that means covering your plants, you have to have twice as many as you need, so covering your plants, so they don't get exposure to sunlight, it stays very tender, and it is an industry that nobody is tapping into yet. I don't want it to be a big industry, there'd be maximum one person working on the land with me, but that is what I would really like to go, to do. I did speak to our neighbors, you know, they were curious about what we were doing. We've started doing dead hedges in the property. We've done the dead hedges out of sight, because I don't think a lot of people are familiar with dead hedges, and they're great for pollinators, they're great for the native birds, especially with having so many birds of prey in the area, the songbirds can get away from them by using the dead hedges, but they can, when you're not used to it, look slightly. So we are keeping those out of sight, so you won't see them from the main road of the house. The only thing we've really done in the front of the house has been put in a small garden. What else? The, we've put, seeded a lot of milkweed into the meadow, and that has all taken, and I've started rooting milkweed to get more pollinators in. And we have noticed in the spring that there has been a change- And we have noticed in the spring that there has been a change in wildlife versus the last in autumn. Um, our property is being used as a bee garden, so, uh, for people like grassroots company has a lot of hives. They don't have enough space to put their hives. She's also a queen breeder. Uh, and she uses, the center of our property has been cleared where the previous owner put in a lot of clover, because she was a hunter. So we had about eight hives, and we're getting more hives in the next couple of weeks. So they'll use the property as, to put bees in and have pollinators in there. So I think that is everything. Um, oh, the, so the reason we got the goats is the sumac is taking over. And the only way you can get rid of sumac is with poison or with goats. The goats take longer, but I don't want to put poison in the property, especially not when we're drinking from our well. So if anybody has any questions or anything about the property, I'd be happy to answer them.
Amber? Any questions?
My only question is, um, you said you spoke to the neighbors and they were curious. Did they, what was their take on when you explained kind of what your vision for the property was?
Well, they came out and looked at goats today. They were fascinated. Uh, they came out and looked at the pond. I think they think we're a bit mad, which is a good sign. Um, the only concern they had was, I, I did, I mean, Casey and I met by phone because I applied for a permit for chickens. Uh, their only concern was where we're going to, were roosters going to be involved? And as I said on my letter that I sent you, the only rooster that'll be in my house will be in a pot. Um, you know, as cock of van. I, I'm a baker. I get up early. That was really, somebody did ask me if we were going to have livestock. I said, no, we'd have the goats, but they would be transitioning for a couple of days. And it's like we have a text chain in the neighborhood, so I did tell people we would have the goats, so they know they were coming in. Um, anybody I spoke to was, you know, like gopher. Nobody did, or nobody told me anyway that they had a concern about us being rezoned.
Joseph?
Yes, uh, um, I, you know, I really enjoy hearing you describe your plans, because it's wonderful. But I do have a question for you, uh, and that is, why are you seeking rezoning?
Well, when we bought the property, we thought it was zoned agricultural. Um, and then I found that I was going to put chickens on it, and I just went, okay, I'm just going to che-, just going to check that there isn't. And that's when, uh, Casey told me we were zoned residential. And I knew that I wanted to grow, uh, certain items and that if I could, to support the farm, just to get back enough money to reinvest back in the farm. So the lavender, uh, the rhubarb, uh, getting help, um, there's, I want to make it like a full-time entity. My youngest son is, uh, an adult who's disabled, and it works over at acorn farms. And I would love to make it that he would be able to eventually earn some living off this land as well and be able to do some agriculture that would be able to support him.
I, I, I understand that, uh, but everything that you have described for us tonight, you're permitted to do on your property now, as I understand it. I, I don't see anything that would violate, uh, the conditions of the zone you're in right now.
Well, I can keep six chickens, which is not very much.
Well, yes, you're limited, and in residential zone, you would be limited to the number of chickens.
That's true.
Although we are considering, looking at that for large residential lots. We've, we've talked about putting that on our schedule, but, um, so it, that would be the one, the one condition that you would want, seek rezoning for, that is, the number of livestock.
I'd eventually like this, I, I started off with a two-year plan. I would like to be able to cut flowers, to put cut flowers in, once we get the sumac down. So there's a lot of stuff I want to do on the property that it is, I think it's important to, for me to establish that I am being taken seriously, that people realize that we're being taken seriously. The reason we went ahead and started all this was to show that we are committed to the property. Because we have invested, yeah. We've invested so much in the property already, and with conversations with you, we had a conversation where showing how serious we were about the property and wanting it to be rezoned. So that we don't, if we want to look into doing something else that we can't do or we shouldn't be doing as homeowners, that we have ourselves covered.
Yes, exactly. That, uh, that is the issue. The, you know, agricultural zone permits a wide variety of uses, as, um, uh, many as special uses, but also, uh, many as permitted uses. And, um, none of the things you have described would, would interfere, uh, as far as I can see, would be a problem in your existing zone. And, um, to, um, to take a, a parcel in the midst of what's pretty well established as a residential area.
Which was a farm.
What's that?
It was a farm.
Oh, I understand. I understand. And, and.
But I can't keep goats on my property. Like, if I was to get four goats to help me with weed control and with, there's a huge amount of poison ivy on the property. There's a huge amount of poison sumac.
And goats are a wonderful solution.
Yeah.
I understand.
I can't keep goats on the property, and for us to get four to six goats on the property with an electric fence around, which would not disturb the neighbors, I can't keep goats on the property. I can't keep sheep on the property either. I can't have a chicken tractor on the property, the way it's written. But if I'm zoned agricultural, I can't have a chicken tractor on the property.
Okay, that, you've answered my question then. Thank you.
Jim?
I have no questions at this time.
Sandy?
You talked about your five-year master plan, or your plan. Um, my question to you is, do you see yourself selling goods from your farm along the side of the road?
No. Um, most of the things, i- if I get good enough with the rhubarb, and understand the rhubarb is a huge investment, and it is going to take several years to get to fruition. I will, if I can sell the rhubarb, which would be great, it will be sold to other local bakeries or local restaurants. And it can be sold out of our bakery in Kalamazoo. I don't want people coming to my house. I don't want my neighbors disturbed. Um, either, I don't want to, I'm not going to put a farm stand up. I, you know, when we do make jam, we give it away to people in the neighborhood. The, this, this is not going to be like a farm, there's not going to be any farm store.
My speaker went off. I know you had said like cut flowers and things that, which I really love what you're thinking of doing. I mean, you're a hobby farmer plus.
Yeah, there's a lot of, um, bakeries have worked really well with bread and, bread and flowers, bread and roses. There's a lot of bakeries sell flowers as well. They're using it as a way, because the margins are so small in bakeries, and the industry is so difficult at the moment, that getting people in with flowers really helps. People will drop $30 on a, on a mason jar full of flowers, but they won't drop $30 on a cake. So having it in and being a symbiotic relationship would help. Having the lavender in, because there's a shortage of culinary lavender.
Well, I applaud you for doing what you have to do to survive, knowing what happened to you with the infrastructure that went downtown. It shows you have a lot of hard work and character, and you're not afraid to do what you need to do to survive.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Brennan. Okay.
Public hearing.
Oh.
Public hearing.
Okay, didn't say it on my agenda.
It is a rezoning, right? Yes. Okay, so we do have a public.
All right.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for 668 East ML Avenue. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're open now again for public hearing. A citizen may state their name and address and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may be, may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor, and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will make statements to the board without discussion with the board, or from the board. But you are welcome to make an appointment with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful. We're open for public hearing.
Why not? Um, I don't really see an issue with it, other than that changing it to AGR, like Joseph said, uh, opens it up to a wide variety of things they can do, but they laid it out pretty well. So I, I don't really have a problem with it. I think it's a good choice to go ahead and let him do it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would entertain a motion, oh.
Is it inappropriate for the spouse of?
No, you can talk.
Well, I'm the support person, so, R. John Paul 6668 East ML Avenue. I'm the one that pretty much knows why she wants to do this, and as far as I can tell, um, you're probably very familiar with farm-to-table type, type issues for restaurants. And we don't have such a thing for bakeries per se. I know for a fact that if you've ever been to her bakery, that she gets 99% of her products from local, from the farmers, whatever. And whenever there's an issue, it, it's, these issues that she's brought up is, we can't get it from Kris Kreme Tree Acres. We can't get it from, you know, we've asked Burt's Bakery, "Burt, where do you get your stuff?" We have very, very severe logistics issues time and time again. And I'm the logistics guy, because 30 years in the military, what do you expect? I'm the paperwork guy. We would always ask, even if the, we get the zoning done, it's to be done respectfully, to take care of the land, to rejuvenate what's there. And we would actually come back and ask you guys, what is appropriate? Because, you know, we've done a lot of research. We don't know. So, you're look, I, I've heard you speak concerned about the agriculture and what you could do if you get rezoned. Basically, what she's proposed is pretty much as far as, as, as she wants to go or needs to go. Even with the five-year plan, it's, it's to be a minimalist approach. If you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, start.
Again, you can start with waiving the bylaw.
Yes.
If you choose to do that.
That's right. A motion on the bylaws? About waiving?
Do we have to make that motion, or can we just have some discussion?
You could have discussion. Ultimately, there will need to be a motion. So you can go ahead and have discussion now.
Okay.
But ultimately, we will need a motion.
Got it.
Amber, would you like, any discussion, anything you want to say?
Sure, um, not necessarily on the waiving of the bylaws, but in terms of the special land use, just to be, or, or the rezoning, rather, um, just to be clear. It is very clear to, I think, all of us how courteous you are and how you want to take very good care of the land and, and what your intentions are. When the property is rezoned, it will be rezoned for eternity until it's zoned again, right? So, should, should you sell this property at some point? I, I know you say no, right, but things happen. Then we don't know that we would get somebody as courteous as yourselves, and we don't know what they could or choose to do with that property. And so I think that's just, to be fair, what's the consideration that this, this commission has to make? That said, um, when I, and I debated, I waffled on this myself back and forth, because it's a piece of property in the middle of, um, an R1A zone, and so do you really rezon this one chunk of land and have everything around it zoned residential? I think that when I, what, what made it clear for me, um, is when we look at the special, or when we look at the future land use map in our master plan, it does show this as agricultural. And so at some point, there will be a shift that has to happen, where these homes that are in a residential area now are going to, based on what we've said, we want to have happen in our community, they will have to become agricultural spaces. And so, um, this is a large lot compared to the others. And I guess my opinion would be that, um, we would be following that, that master plan use if we were to move it to agricultural. So it wasn't without deliberation and, and a lot of thought, but that's kind of where I arrive at.
Thank you. Joseph?
Well, Amber, I certainly agree with, uh, the first part of your discussion. Where I take exception is, uh, your reliance on the future land use plan. The future land use plan is not a mandate. It is a guideline. And whenever we make reference to it, we must look at the pattern of existing development. All around, especially on the fronted road, there, there is, um, established residential nature. If this was zoned agricultural, um, and it does, you know, undergo redevelopment or different development plan, you have to look at the potential uses, uh, the, the potential special uses that could occur in close proximity to these other established residential properties. And, um, I think that this is an example of spot zoning, which is, uh, uh, considered a terrible, uh, planning principle. To take a parcel, a single parcel, and surround it with properties that are zoned differently. So, um, although I certainly, uh, encourage their use and their, uh, plans for their property, I, uh, you know, I do not support rezoning this at this time.
Thank you, Joseph. James?
At this time, I feel like this property is single-family. I understand you want to go agriculture and stuff like that. I feel like that we should have a public hearing and move, and see what we do from there.
Sandy?
Thanks, Jim.
Future land use, it is agriculture, and I guess we're looking at 2030? Is that correct, Casey? For the future? And when do we, are we scheduled to start our?
Yeah, so we don't need a review for five years, something like that. So the last review was 2023, so we're not till 2028. You guys can, of course, you know, review as you please, but that's not, we don't have to do our big review until then. Um, we don't have to do complete overhaul anytime soon, because it was just review 2023, if that makes sense.
So if we stick with what we're thinking for 2030, it would be. So if we stick with what we're thinking for 2030, it would become agricultural, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Whoops. But what I do agree with Joe is it is, at this point in time, I hate that phrase, it is considered spot zoning, though.
No, it's not.
It's not. Okay, I know you've been sitting over here and you wanted to say that. So I'm gonna, I, I don't want to say anymore. I want to see what Catherine has to say. That's agreeable with everybody else.
So I'm a zoning attorney.
Yes.
Okay. There's case law in Michigan that if you have a master plan and the first parcel comes along to effectuate the master plan, it is not spot zoning. It is in compliance and effectuating the master plan. It's City of Askersville versus Carrollton Concrete Court of Appeals, Michigan, 2003. So we need to understand, although this might be the first one and it might be surrounded by residential, this is what we said we want. And our zoning is based on a master plan. And although it is a guide and, you know, you have to consider surrounding it and the analysis is the factors that Kyle walked us through, I don't think that it precludes, it is not spot zoning and it follows the master plan. And I do not think, in my personal opinion, that you need to say no to it because of surrounding development. If you, if this is our master plan, which it is. So, I mean, that's something you can think about. Additionally, if there are concerns about what might happen in the future, the applicant, and let's say this was denied, they could always come back with a conditional rezoning, which has to be offered by the applicant so you know that the township can't tell you to do that. And you could offer conditions on what you would do on the property. If there's concerns about what else could be done in the agricultural district and you strictly want to do this type of farming activity, then that, that could be done as well. So just to bring that up.
Thank you, Catherine. I stand corrected.
Oh, that's all right. This is my job.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
I feel that a lot of people don't seem to take pollinators and farms that don't have livestock seriously. And I've seen it time and time again. Somebody went for rezoning that was doing regenerative forestry and made the property look beautiful, took out the invasive species, saved all the native trees, the property is stunning, and was refused. Because it was regenerative forestry. What I'm doing is doing more for the pollinators, growing bilavender, growing plants that will bring in pollinators, that will help the songbirds. You know, our native Michigan bees have, have been reduced by nearly 80% in the last 10 years. I counted 15 native bees in the small plant that I planted today in the afternoon. I didn't see any of those bees last year. I know they were here. They just weren't in the property that I was there. And I really don't feel that unless you have cows or horses or sheep, that a lot of people take you seriously. And there's a huge movement in the United States that's led mostly by small farms like what we want to do, bringing back pollinators, bringing back butterflies. And I think that just because we're not going to have livestock on the farm, we need to think about how we are supporting our environment. If we could put it into a conservatorship, I would do it, just to guarantee that nobody's going to be hauling cows out my driveway. Not a big fan of cows, you know? Don't eat them.
Does that be part of the limitation that you brought up that we weren't aware of?
Is it okay, Mr. TFA answer? Okay. So if, so first of all, this rezoning request will be, this planning commission either tonight or at their next meeting will make a recommendation to the township board. It will then go on to the township board. If it was denied, okay, you could, you could offer a conditional rezoning, which means you say, I want to rezon to ag and these are the only uses I'm going to do. And you define what you will do, okay, so that everyone understands exactly what you're talking about. I don't know if that's the concern or not, but that's something you could do. And, and I think we do know, we have experience in this township with agricultural activities that include, you know, broader than just animals. We know about farm markets, we know about.
Event barns.
Well, and this is not an event barn and we do know about all of that. So we have a good knowledge of agricultural activities and farming in this township. We understand the Right to Farm Act. And so what you're explaining is your activities, I think, would fall within the scope of the Right to Farm Act because it's a broad definition of agricultural activities. So I think that's something, you know, I don't know what's going to happen with the planning commissioner, ultimately the board, but if it did not go well, you could always come back again. And I don't know if there's any time period about you can't submit again within a year or something like that, but I don't think so. So that, that's a possibility, you know, whether or not it gets to that point, I don't know. And a conditional rezone, so I don't know if Amber's been, since you two have been here, we've done one, but it's allowed under law in Michigan. It's allowed in this township and it requires the applicant to come forward and, and the township can't ask for it, but they say, I'd like to be rezoned to this zoning district and I will limit myself to these uses.
And we've done a lot of them.
We've done a lot of them. So you enter into a written agreement, you, that agreement is recorded and that agreement runs with the land and should they not perform or they fail to perform, then the zoning goes back to what originally was.
And something like that would address my concerns.
Well, we'll see if we, if we can get that far, but yes. Yep. Again, we can't ask them to do that.
And we've had a lot of rezonings that didn't go like we wanted them to after we rezoned them. And that's the concern.
True. I do understand their concern about agricultural activities and what she wants to do. She doesn't want to be limited to the, you know, smaller level of agricultural activities you can have in a residential zoning district. So she's saying, I'm committed to this property. I want to be able to do this range of activities. So really, for her purposes, ag is the correct zoning and I do not believe in my understanding that it would be a spot zoning based on case law and my practice as a zoning attorney.
Thank you. Members, any other comments?
Can I just add something else? And I believe I read it in the content that Kyle and Casey provided in the packet, but the, part of the reason for this future land use being zoned as agriculture is to help promote and maintain the greenhouses that are a part of our community today. And so again, thinking about greenhouse space, to me, I think it aligns. And so I just wanted to bring that point up as well because I think that that's a really important part of our community is the greenhouses.
Thank you. Joe? Anything else?
No.
James?
Nothing at this time.
Sandy?
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion on our bylaws to forego.
It could be a motion either way, yes, a motion, yes, we waive, or a motion, I think we should uphold our bylaw.
Right.
Check where you want to go.
That's, that's what I'm looking for.
Excuse me.
I don't think.
These people here, you know the neighbors here, so they must approve of, you know what I mean? When they go, they need to be handling all the people come out here, you work, he's got to oppose it. So we have something to call it too.
Do we have a motion for our bylaws?
I would like to move that we uphold the bylaws and proceed normally.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we will take this up on?
July 10th.
July 10th.
And I think it may be beneficial if me or Kyle provide the uses for R1A and ag. They aren't too different, so maybe that will help ease some concerns as well.
Yes, please.
Casey?
Yes.
Also the special uses.
Oh, yes, I would provide the whole thing. And I will, I don't want to speak too far. A lot of the uses that may, may be concerned about may not be fit for a parcel of this size, just my sidebar, sorry, maybe overstepping.
Okay, moving on to discussion of citizen comments. Sandy, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, thank you. Chair Nichols. I think that us having discussion or citizen comments at the very end of our meeting kind of defeats our purpose of a lot of our residents showing up and being able to stand up and say what they want before we do any business. I would like to see citizens' comment moved to after the approval of the minutes, maybe, or, yeah, that's probably where I think it needs to go. And then possibly, it's open for discussion, just a thought, that we do another one at the end where it is now under number eight, citizen comment.
Okay. Any other discussion? Amber?
I'm not opposed.
Joseph?
I support that idea.
James?
I support it very much.
And of course Sandy does.
I do. With that, I'll make a motion, if everybody's good, to add a citizen's comment after the approval of the minutes, which would come to number, would be number five, and then everything else would move down one.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We will have another citizen comment in our agenda.
So does that mean you're going to have two?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to mobile vendor ordinance text amendment. Kyle, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so after our last discussion on this, Casey and I went back through with Attorney Kaufman as well, providing guidance on this, revised some of it. You know, we heard kind of that the Vicksburg model was where you, as a commission, were preferring to go after you spent your time and efforts going through previously with the City Camazoo model. So after hearing from one of the mobile vendor owners, the consensus seemed to be to shorten our ordinance and make it a little bit less stringent. So we went through, modified the new ordinance draft for your consideration. This was also because of the township board requesting that the planning commission re-review this. So before you, tonight is just discussion only in public hearing, Casey's next, July 10th for this.
Okay.
So this is just the discussion tonight, in case there's anything you want clarifications on, but you have seen most of this language before. It's just putting in Comstock's name into other templates that we've worked on.
Okay.
So nothing has changed significantly on this. We incorporated some of the comments we heard from the last meeting as well, that permits are valid for seven calendar days. There seemed to be consensus on that. We also listed where they are prohibited instead of permitted. Again, the intent being to protect the residential neighborhoods from having an operation of a mobile vendor showing up everywhere, you know, business days, can operate any day of the week, storage equipment, we went through, there's provisions for traffic, private property, we did add this clarification. So vendors conducting business on private property for private events that are not open to the general public may operate without the need for a permit. Such events may include, but are not limited to weddings, celebration of life, birthday party, company events such as lunches, dinners, retreats, and educational graduations. So we put that provision in there just to kind of give guidance for any future staff members or commissions of where, you know, what would not be required for a permit on that. You know, public property, that would be where they have to get approval from the board of trustees, signage provisions, waste, light, noise, parking, alcohol sales. So again, therefore, that. And we also included in, you know, an applicant seeking to challenge the removal of their permit may submit an appeal to the township board. That was a, you know, condition we heard from previous times. So again, this is open more for discussion, but Casey and I felt that based on our past deliberations of this, we felt confident bringing it forward to you and setting that public hearing for July 10th. We do, you know, I'm sure the commission is aware, but the applicant is in the room and has been graciously, sitting patiently through this process for six months with us while we've gone through this, so.
Kyle, is this a zoning ordinance amendment?
Zoning ordinance, correct.
Okay, so it would be added as a new section?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Amber, any comments?
Just a question. We had talked about like a permit and then also like a special event permit, which would be separate of this, correct?
Yeah, we have provisions right now for temporary use permits.
Okay.
So we're trying to not muddy the waters too much, so.
Great. That was my question is just, does it exist or does it have to? So, perfect.
I didn't, I didn't have any, any problems with it, basically. If they're operating on private property and they're not serving the general public, then they're not really subject to this. Is that correct?
Correct. And again, we try to provide some examples of how that would be defined, you know, again, not all-inclusive or not limiting to, but again, with, you know, weddings, celebration of life, so forth, just to give that guidance of.
Private parties.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
James?
I thought this was a good simplification.
James?
Yes, I have read through this and I like a lot of the stuff that's in it. The changes is very short, it's not difficult, so I'm happy with it right now.
Sandy?
I do have a couple of things and the first paragraph, mobile vendors, number one, the term vendor within this ordinance shall apply to mobile food and general mobile vendors. After speaking with this with someone else, and then you go down to definitions under B, mobile vendor, a licensed and operable motor vehicle or trailer whose method of operation is temporary and may be transit or static location involves the sale of a product or service either on or off the premises. I realize this is, it says mobile vendor ordinance, but would this like apply to Revers, Eastroff people, even though it says, it says mobile vendors on top of this, not mobile food vendors? So I just want to make sure that we're not going after businesses that are already pre-licensed by another entity.
No, we'd consider those like work trailers and work efforts, same thing, Treasure Bluefield with like carpet cleaning, floor cleaning, those operations, they're providing a direct service to that resident and then they're leaving. It's not, they're not selling gutters per se out of a trailer on a property. They're providing that direct professional service to a residential commercial site. So that's how we draw that distinction.
This is like a mobile pet groomer.
Okay, and then I had one more.
But in that case, it may not even be that, right? Because they are coming to a specific site.
Yeah.
Providing a service for a person and then leaving. Like rarely do they set up and say, bring your dog to me at MLF, you know?
Yeah, you're right. I forgot your professional background.
The other thing I had a question was for licensing. If we have someone who is already licensed by the state and we're asking for a license here to sell goods, what supersedes?
So in clarity, based on the discussion from the board in the past, we change this to be a permit to operate within here, not a license. So I do want to draw the attention away from a license.
Okay.
Licensing being, you're right, from the health department, as we had that presentation at the board.
Yeah.
That's separate. This would only be a permit to operate for seven calendar days, subject to them having.
This would be to allow them, whatever type of licenses or approvals they need to get from the health department or whomever, this just allows them in Comstock Township to use their mobile food vendor trailer for up to seven days in a row? Is there any limit in the number of times they can get it in a year or so? You know, they could come, as long as they want to have a mobile trailer and food vendor or vendor in the township, they need to get their own permit. Just like, you know, somebody might have the approval from the state of Michigan to operate a restaurant, but they need to get a special land use approval here or something from the township. So it's an analogous, you know, it's the same type of level of locational or land use approval from the township here. These are for mobile, you know, same thing, like if I'm going to run a restaurant or a hair salon in Comstock, I might need state licensing, but I also need township approval as to where I can locate and that type of thing.
Does that apply to private property vendors where, like, like in the case of the people that filed the permit or? people that filed the permit or tried to make a permit, where it's their property and it's there all the time, like an outside kitchen?
So we would treat that, as we discussed in the past, probably as a site plan amendment because we're utilizing that mobile vendor for food and kitchen operations, so it may be accessory use. The intent being with that, Mr. Chair, is that our understanding is they would be open to the public and serving to the public. Some communities permit mobile trailers or like a outdoor barbecue pull behind trailer as an accessory kitchen, so long as they meet the definitions and site plan requirements. So if it's going to be on-site for a long time, then as we discussed in the past, we'd probably have them come forward with a site plan review. This is only to operate for a seven-day period throughout the township.
Okay.
So other establishments would then need different requirement reviews.
Okay.
One more question, if I could. So in that case, like a site plan amendment, is that something that's handled administratively or would that still have to come before us?
If they meet the definitions of admin approval, we can do it in-house. There's some, such as parking lot expansions, that don't give us the flexibility administratively for Casey to write to review. So if they meet that provision and it's a trigger point as well for expansions, we can do it administratively. If they don't, then yes, I'd come forward for you guys for review.
Okay. I just think we can. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
So if we have someone who is going to be in operation longer than a week, would it be up to the township board or would it be in this ordinance where we have them apply for longer than a week?
I think they just have to come back in.
I think it ought to be, there ought to be different options.
I think that's what we heard from, I don't remember her name.
Misty.
Yes, thank you. Was that a week was normal and it wasn't a big deal to reapply if needed because it's simply, I mean, you basically already have the application filled out, so you're just probably changing a date and reprinting type of deal. I don't know, I think that's where we get muddy, is if we start adding different provisions, which is what we did, and then we pulled back from that because we felt we got feedback that it maybe wasn't favorable.
Madam Treasure, we also have provisions for temporary uses as well, so if they wanted to, 30 days? 30 days. If they wanted to go for three weeks or four weeks, we'd probably have them submit for temporary use for that site, knowing that they're gonna be on that single site for 30 days. If they want to move around, we'd probably have them just submit different permits so we can ensure that it meets our regulations.
So here we're back to, back in people's pockets again with an extended, not an extended permit, I guess is what I'm saying, more regulatory from government instead of letting these people run their business.
Right, so I acknowledge that and as you have, I'm sure, aware it would be the township board would establish any fees on that, that would not be at the planning commission.
Correct.
Correct. So you, as the township board, could establish a $5 fee, a $20 fee, no fee, if that's what you'd like to do as well in that regard, but that would be up to you at the board level.
For a reoccurring one, you guys could make it a no fee on the recurrence, if you wanted, but we don't do that. Any other comments? Do we want to move ahead with the mobile vendor ordinance?
Yeah, we have a public hearing July 10th, so I don't think any decision.
So we can't do anything today until July 10th?
Correct.
So.
But we need, we need to finalize something before the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Because that's what we have to publish.
If you want changes to this, then you need to talk about that tonight.
Right.
So, do we have any changes that we need to make? Amber?
No, not that I necessarily see.
Joseph?
No.
James?
No.
Sandy? To changes?
No, I guess not.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I might, just to, Treasure Bloomfield, I know she's had a lot of good review of this, I want to make sure I'm addressing any of her concerns, qualms, comments like that, because this would be a good time to further deliberate if she would like on that. I don't want to short her any of her thoughts or comments on this. So if she does have other concerns, I would welcome to hear them if the rest of the commission is amenable to that as well.
Wasn't there a statement that you thought should be added?
I did have a statement after visiting with Misty, who was the one that came and gave the presentation, and that's kind of where I was headed with that, because I think she understood what I was trying to say to her. And that was, if you have a vendor that is already out there, I'll give an example, Nikos, they're in the township, if he had a business already, which was an existing business, he should be exempt because it's an extension of his business. That's where I was explaining to her that I felt like we're overstepping, regulating people if they're already being regulated. So that's kind of what I was thinking that that should have probably been put in that first paragraph. Part of an existing business operation should be exempt if it's an extension of your business.
And if, let me just ask a question, so I understand, if, if, for instance, just using Nikos, he wanted to have a food truck, but on his, on his property here, that's, then he would, then they're talking about doing a site plan amendment, right? If he wanted to park a food truck.
Like permanently? Because if not, it could be temp sales.
Well, if it was permanently, then it would be a site plan amendment. If he wanted to do it for a period of seven days, because there was some type of thing going to park or something, then he would, as written, would pull this permit for one seven-day period. And I think she's saying, would he even have to pull the permit? And I think the permit is intended to make sure that when a mobile food vendor sets up or a mobile vendor, whomever, there's adequate parking, there's adequate lighting, there's adequate, all those types of things. So whether or not you want an existing vendor to make sure they satisfy these requirements about where they locate it and waste and all the other stuff, you could allow them to get a permit for free or, or maybe, I mean, if it's on, what if it's, what if it's not on their own property? What if it's somewhere else? Niko wants to take the trailer and put it somewhere, you know, over where something else is happening. I would say, see, you would think he would make them get this permit.
Yes, because they're, they're doing what everybody else is doing.
Right, but, so if they're having on their own property, I think that's different. But I'm just trying to understand.
So, is that something, if somebody does it on their own property, so again, example even in the audience, right? Like if they do it on their own property, can we exempt that in here? And the reason I, I guess where I chew on this, and maybe this is where Sandy's at too, I don't know, but like you're paying property taxes on your property, how complicated do you want to make it if, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I understand the parking piece, does it increase or decrease parking based on where you put it? And I guess my question then, back to that, was why I was asking, like, can that just be an administrative situation? And I don't, if I'm really honest, I didn't totally understand all the things you said. But I think that's where, like, I don't know that we need to add more complication, or maybe that's something that's exempted from a fee. I don't know how we can write that.
I don't know either, but it's, it's kind of like these vendors have an up on a brick and mortar.
Right, because a brick and mortar has to go through site plan review. A brick and mortar might have to go through a special use. So if a vendor, you know, that's an unfair advantage on a mobile vendor that even if on their own property, you know, I would think we would want to make sure that parking's adequate, lighting's adequate, sanitation, whatever. Because that, that analysis, that land use analysis is the same, whatever the underlying use is, it's the analysis of the land use. So I, I understand maybe an existing business doesn't have to pay the fee or, or something like that, but they should still pull that permit because you want to make sure that the use is going to, you know, work on the site, essentially.
Comply.
Comply on the site with the things you think are important, but I, I understand about, you know, I already pay my taxes, I'm a brick and mortar restaurant, I want to add an outdoor food truck, you know, that people can come and sit outside in the summers and I put some chairs outside, that type of thing. So I, I don't know the best way to approach that, but the concern is a land use concern is, I guess what I'm trying to say.
Well, the money part is, is not our part, anyway. It's the township that's gonna decide what.
No, but you could make a recommendation.
I was gonna say, we could recommend.
Yeah.
And they can take that out when they approve it, you know, if they want.
There's a situation, I think it was in Madawan that I read about recently, where there's a brewery that has a food truck out and another business was, like, there's a hole. So it is a thing to have complications between brick and mortar and then another brick and mortar that also uses a truck for extension of their business. So again, I wouldn't profess to know the right answer here, but I think it's a relevant issue.
Well, isn't that where we put the distance part in? The truck has to be a certain distance from brick and mortar?
But if it's on their own property, next to their own brick and mortar.
Oh.
I guess it wouldn't matter, right? Because they're already running a business next to the other business. Right?
I don't, I don't think we'll have that problem.
Can I ask a question? If the permit is valid for seven days and they want to do it for 52 weeks, does that mean they have to pull 52 permits through that calendar year?
That's what it means.
That's where I was kind of going with that.
She's asking if.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there some way?
I mean, we hope this grows.
I thought originally the plan was to do it a yearly permit, but then that was shifted. And so now it seems like we need to go back to that yearly permit idea.
It shouldn't be that difficult to, to offer both or some sort of tiered option.
We have the temp sales, that's good for 30 days and you can renew it one, one time per year, so that's 60 days total. So we have that option.
Yeah.
But if this person wants to be here for a year.
So, Mr. Chair, may I, to Casey's.
Go ahead.
Point there, as you recall, we did set out a four-eight, a year, just to make it simple, so that way that vendor could operate within the township for a year regardless of what site it was, so long as they conform to those regulations. After hearing from the operator indicating that it'd be best to go to a shorter-term permit, we went that route based on the general consensus we had here. To Casey's point on some of this with operating for a year on a single site, most municipalities will consider that not a temporary use or anything, they'll consider it an actual accessory or principal use because you're no longer temporary, you're operating on that site for.
And that becomes a site plan.
Yes, sir. So the intent with this is to allow mobile vendors in the township with regulations. If, as Amber asked, you know, there's a extension of their kitchen or they have a food truck for that business, as Sandy said, for like Nikos, that would be potentially an accessory use to their principal because they have the restaurant there in that regard. So this is for those who wish to come in for two to three days or a weekend event and then go somewhere else. That's what this intent is for.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
If we're discussing cost for this business, I think it'd be useful to also discuss the cost of a site plan review, because that can be upwards of $2,000. But that is good for, forever, I assume. So I know we were discussing the cost of the project, so we're talking about the cost of a permit, and do we need a permit still? So just work some of those things out as an idea.
You didn't throw a little thing in, did you? You didn't throw some little thing in, did you?
So a minor site plan even that you could review administratively could possibly be $2,000?
A minor site plan is $1,100, around there.
Okay.
But if they had to buy one every seven days.
No, they won't, not, not. On a site plan, there's.
No, but I'm, I'm talking about if we didn't do it that way and they had to buy it every seven days, that would be horrendous.
At a certain point, you're not going to be temporary.
Right.
You're gonna be either a 30-day period, up to 60 in a, in a year, or you're gonna be longer than that, which would be a site plan, almost. So it's, it's a little bit difficult, but I think, and if I may, Mr. Chair, we heard from the operator, from Vicksburg, who said this was a good way to go. And I think that's why we backtracked and, and came off of the year-long permit.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is this ready for the public, a public hearing? Everybody good with it?
I'm, I'm good with it. I'm ready for go a public hearing.
Sandy?
Sure.
I don't have anything to offer to change it, so.
That's kind of where I'm at. I, I don't know how to make it better.
Okay, let's move on.
Mr. Chair, just as a reminder too, after your public hearing, you will still have time to discuss and you can still modify from there to determine, you know, if it meets your standards as well after you hear from the public.
Okay.
So there is still time to, you know, you still have the ability to modify.
Next on the agenda is Amber?
Do we need a motion or this is ready to go?
No, I think if you just direct Casey and Kyle to place this on the next meeting for a public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, like, I wanted to bring Bess back up because I know we didn't make a recommendation in our last meeting. And really, I just, Mr. Chair, I'd love to hear from you on the moratorium and kind of where things stand. I heard there was some discussion about a joint meeting, so I just thought it was probably prevalent, keep it on the agenda to at least continue showing efforts of working on it. And, yeah, would love to hear.
Casey, you want to talk about the joint meeting part?
Sure. So Supervisor Martin, and I believe the rest of the moratorium committee, I caught up a little bit on it, would like to hold a joint meeting between the moratorium committee and the planning commission. I'm unsure if you'd have recommendations, like a hard copy prepared, if you want to have more dialogue, get to those details later. My initial recommendation was going to be July 10th, because I thought the only thing we would have would be mobile vendor public hearing. However, we now have a pretty full calendar yet again, or agenda yet again, so I'm not quite sure the best time. We have July 4th coming up, so people are out of town. We have township board meetings coming up, so we would then have to discuss whether we want to have that joint meeting. It would have to be a special meeting, potentially. Just to throw cost out there, again, special meetings could be around $1,100 bucks. I'm not quite sure if we want to just add to July 10th or splurge a little bit and spend that money for the special meeting. Just want to hear you guys' thoughts about days, times, and how to proceed.
Sandy? James?
Is there any comment from the moratorium when they think that would be a good time to get together?
I believe they were not, they do not want to have another meeting, they don't, they don't plan to have another meeting until they meet with you all, hopefully to have some guidance for you, you to say, let's look at this and they can go back and start having meetings. So the flow of the meeting has not been discussed yet. Maybe Larry could speak to what occurred there. When Greg comes back, he can possibly, but the first thing was just to figure out when the meeting could happen.
Our, excuse me, our last meeting, we went through the ordinance that was passed and we, actually Ben went through it pretty heavily and Catherine and.
Yeah.
Ben talked quite extensively about different items in the ordinance that we did. And Catherine was gonna research some of them or?
So we, we did have extensive discussion. I took some jumbled-up minutes, which I sent to Casey, and we did finally start, as the moratorium committee finally started discussing all the parts of the existing ordinance, if there are any they would like to change. There were some discussions on, and I don't remember everything exactly, but setbacks, noise, whether they would like an overlay district, whether they would like to remove this, this land use from the agricultural district at, at all and just leave it in the industrial. So there was a very wide-ranging discussion from the moratorium committee. And I may be missing some of the things we discussed.
We also discussed about different locations that we. We also discussed about different locations that we would feel would be better suited for Bess.
Right.
The issue when we talked with the company was that the, if it's not right next to the, the power center, whatever we call that.
The grid.
The grid. They have to have a switching station, which is more money. Now, if it were in the Brown, Brownsfield area, a lot of that money would be offset by that.
We also talked about some of the standards that the MPSC has when they review an application. And for instance, the person has to submit feasible alternative locations and then explain why this is the location they chose. We talked about setbacks from sensitive land uses. We talked about maybe going to an overlay district. And so these were just all things that were put on the table. There is no right or wrong. It was just kind of a very robust discussion.
I do have a question, Larry, Catherine. Were there any, like, you guys agreed on setbacks? You guys agreed on sound?
No, there was no.
We didn't agree on anything.
So maybe beneficial to have another moratorium committee meeting where you all create a hard copy ordinance to present to the planning commission? Because I guess at this meeting, if we had a joint meeting, it would just be another item of us bouncing things around. I'm not quite sure if adding more brains to the pot would help because there'll be 13 of us working on this ordinance at one time or so just an idea.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is the moratorium committee wants guidance from the planning commission.
Yeah, that's.
You know.
That was the reason for the joint meeting.
So we have Larry and Greg and Mr. Sherwood was not at the moratorium meeting. But I think that's what, you know, they respect that many of the people on the planning commission spent a long time on this and they would like, I think, if I may say this right, and you can correct me, Mr. Nichols, they would like that, to use that knowledge. They were respectful of that knowledge and that work that's been done and they wanted to try and discuss it. So I don't know the best approach, whatever, whatever it might be.
Well, I think we believed that the, all the, the more information, the better. And the more that the planning commission could contribute would also help us.
Yeah.
In creating a recommendation to present to.
Yeah. I was just curious. I thought it was going to be the moratorium committee work on the ordinance for, you know, six, seven months and then create an ordinance with the help of staff and our attorney, create, present that ordinance to the planning commission, planning commission that makes adjustments, and then goes to township board. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can all work together, but be, but be productive and move forward when we all have so many ideas in that room at one night.
I don't think the moratorium committee wants to do something the planning commission won't support. So they want to have that conversation rather than spin their wheels, come forward with something that's a, that's a dead stop. But that's just from what, I was only at the last meeting. I haven't been at many of them. So I don't want to speak for the committee itself. And I will say, hey, Mr. Doorlag, write this down. First application came in. First application came in. So to the MPSC just this week, so.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
My comment is as soon as possible. Please, let, you know, the first available Thursday.
Okay. So that would be, well, next Thursday is July 3rd and that's probably not going to work with holidays. I know if you.
I'll be out of town.
Yeah, if you, you'll be out of town. Following Thursday would be July 10th, but do we want to?
Do you want to do it July 10th, like from 3:00 to 5:00 or something?
We could do it earlier.
And then, but I don't know if everyone works. I don't know what everyone's schedule is. I don't know if it's too long a night. I don't know.
Because then we would do that more, the joint meeting and then have.
Then we have to have dinner and.
Those three things.
Could, could you poll and ask everybody to see if we could get a decent attendance?
And then do it that day? So we get it done?
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Like the sooner the better. I don't think that putting it off is wise. And I do think that it will be advantageous for us to work on it together. Like I, I respect and appreciate that they want our contribution because we saw how difficult this was for us to get the mobile vendor.
Seems to be stuck there.
So, yeah.
Mr. Chair, with the two items carried over, the special land use request for the home occupation and the rezoning request, I mean, you've had the public hearings. So it would just be a deliberation on a recommendation moving forward at the 10th. The public hearing we've already had on a mobile vendor before and had some comments, this has been simplified. So we, you don't potentially anticipate additional public comment, but I don't know how many comments. So you could also look at maybe doing like a 5 o'clock meeting as well of a joint. It would then be your new business upfront. So you would work on that and then move into the old business of those other three items as well.
And I think the three items would probably move pretty quick since we've had so much time with them. I'm hoping.
So in order to help, you know, not make it a long night, you could, you know, see if you could do a 5 o'clock meeting for special.
Would that need to be noticed since on our calendar, it already says 6?
Yeah, we would have to notice if you change a time, you would have to, within three days of today, you would have to post the notice of the change of the time. Whether we say 5:00 PM is the special.
It's supposed to be special technically?
Special meeting with the, with the moratorium committee and then 6 o'clock is the regular, you just leave the regular meeting as is. Or if you're going to do the whole thing, is it all one meeting then, Kyle? It's moratorium and planning commission meeting?
That'd be something else to do.
Okay. So, you know, you could, if you did that, then we would have to post a notice change for the planning commission meeting to start at 5:00 instead of 6:00 and post a notice for the moratorium committee to meet at 5:00 on July. That's the way you go.
But as Joe asked, I'm sure Casey and I can send out an email to the both groups and see if that would function for both planning commission and the moratorium committee.
Yes, thank you.
And then, I don't know, just get preemptive work since I don't have to email you all. Is there a specific way the agenda should work? Do we have, because the MC also does their minutes and agenda approval. So how would that work? Would they just come and not have a meeting technically and just be in the audience and talk?
No, we would probably have them, three of them are sitting up here anyways, right? And then we, I guess you could have maybe a smaller table down here or they could sit in the front row or something like that. And they would have, you know, generally when we have joint meetings, we have each board call their meeting to order. And so there would be sitting Supervisor Martin and who else is the Chrissy Cherry and who's, trustee Amis. So the three of them would be here or something. And then I guess I would, we would sit in the audience and let them be up here essentially probably, if that, if we could all fit. I don't know if we can. But they would each call their meeting to order and then have, you know, we'd have to have public comments. So hopefully that would be short so they could get to their discussion.
So potentially 5:00? Is that enough time? Should we go up to 4:00 or is? I don't know.
If we're going to write a, if we're going to write it, we need to go earlier.
Are we going to complete, also, this is it, this is the, this is us writing it?
We're going to start.
A workshop?
It may not get written.
Yeah, correct.
But we're going to talk.
It's probably going to take longer than an hour.
So should we look at 4:00?
I think 4:00.
Probably.
If everyone can make that.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Well, thank you, guys.
So Mr. Chair, just for clarification, does that work for the five members, the planning commission at 4:00? I believe Treasurer Bloomfield's looking as well, but.
I can do that.
I can do that.
As long as we have a quorum, so.
99% sure I can, yeah.
James? Okay. Yes. All right. I guess I'll read this that was asked to be put on. Dear fellow commissioners, on December 12th, 2024, Treasury Bloomfield did not vote on the motion made during the R1C zoning district text amendment discussion. The minutes reflect this, yet she did not formally abstain. For further evidence, the recording on PMN clearly shows that this around the 53 minute mark. If I am to be investigated for potential non-fees, I would like to request that we look further into this situation as she did not speak to vote and did not ask to abstain. Sincerely, Bob Sherwood. So.
I will just say I have not started the work on the three legal opinions I've been assigned yet. So.
Okay.
You know, whether you assign me an additional one, it would all be written at the same time. It's an analysis of the planning commission bylaws and the Planning Enabling Act. So whatever you decide to do on that, it would, it would all come, all would come back at the same time.
Comments? James?
I feel that since there's been three, that we might as well have a fourth one written so it's clear and everybody knows what is going on here so that we're not leaving anything out there. Let's put it on the table, have a lawyer review it and go from there.
Joseph?
I agree. We might as well get the opinion.
Amber?
Yeah, I think, you know, like I said, I think we have to be consistent. And if we're going to be consistent, which was the decision the last time, then we have to be consistent. I feel like I, I would caution us all against retaliatory witch hunts because this could very quickly feel, feel like that. But again, I, I don't know how to, I'll just leave it at that.
We have to be as transparent as possible.
Sandy, I'll comment.
I'm good with it. I have nothing to hide. I think that the applicant for the R1C only knew that I was a no vote. And if Casey remembers, her and I did meet with him and the very first time he sat down and I walked into the room, he said, why'd you want to meet with me? Did you decide to change your vote? And I said, absolutely not. Did I not, Casey? So I met with him just to listen to him and get more information. But yeah, I was a no vote for every time we voted on that.
Well, then I guess I would entertain a motion to move forward with this.
Mr. Chair, if you, I would advise, and this is Catherine's bullywink, not mine, but just be consistent with the past legal opinions. It may be prudent to do a roll call vote.
Yes, I intend to do a roll call vote. Please, Jim? James?
If you have a motion, if.
Oh, we got to have a motion first.
If you had a motion to move forward, I would.
You made the motion last time. Do you remember what you said?
Yeah, I just asked for a legal opinion on the bylaws and failure to vote.
Okay, I move that we request a formal opinion on the December 12th, 2024 vote whether there was any incorrect actions.
Support. Let me do that for myself.
Okay. Let's, we'll do a roll call on that then? Or no, all in favor?
Roll call.
No, that's right. We got to do the roll call.
Now, I'd like to have the attorney give her definition.
So this is a motion to direct me to write a written legal opinion in response to Mr. Sherwood's letter today regarding Treasurer Bloomfield's apparent failure to vote on December 12th, 2024. So if you vote yes, it will be to direct me to write a legal opinion on this set of facts. If you vote no, it will be no legal opinion is needed.
And then my question is Sandy vote on this also?
She can vote on this, yes.
Okay. Okay, Sandy?
Yes.
Jimmy? Yes. Larry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
I just, for the record, when the board's talking about legal fees, I'm just saying.
It's out of my budget, so don't worry. It's the zoning budget.
James? What was the tally?
The tally was five, yes, no, zero.
Thank you. Moving on, we are going to citizen comment. A citizen may state their name and address and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board members, but you are welcome to make an appointment with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful.
I want to express my full support for the decision to not waive the planning commission bylaws. They were put in place for a reason, to ensure structure, transparency and fairness in how this township operates. And choosing to uphold them isn't just procedural. It's a statement to the commission and that the commission is committed to accountability and governance. Waiving them, especially when convenient, would only damage the public trust, set a dangerous precedent as we already have. Also want to sincerely thank the board for making a much needed change in allowing public comment before discussion and decisions are made. For far too long, residents have been treated like an afterthought in these discussions. Opening the floor for public input before discussion or decisions are finalized shows a real step towards the right, in the right direction for its transparency, integrity and actual community involvement. That says, I do want to raise a serious concern during the recent public meeting at the moratorium, I was locked out of half of it. If it's a public meeting, it should be open for everybody, not just, or it shouldn't be locked out halfway through because township staff leaves. Lastly, I think it's important to call out, it's called out with becoming increasingly obvious to many of us, there's a pattern of retaliatory behavior on display. It's clear that Mr. Sherwood is engaging in a witch hunt aimed at Treasurer Bloomfield. And it seems like he spent his entire weekend watching old minutes just to try to catch her in something that he could twist into an issue. That's not leadership. It's petty and political. And it's exactly the kind of behavior that turns residents away from local government. We know your board's focused on solving problems, not targeting individuals out of spite and ego.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nate Doorlag, 8782 East Man Galesburg, Michigan, 49053. I'm a resident of Comstock Township. Talking fast because I might have a lot to say. I, you know, is this, the moratorium committee and the planning commission is, looks like the end is drawing nigh on completing the work of proposed amendments to the large scale renewable energy. I just want to propose something that I, I've been wrestling with in my mind from, for many months now. And that is how to mitigate the danger of a battery energy storage system for myself as a resident and other landowners in the township. And the setbacks is, is what I've really focused on. And then at the moratorium committee, a light came on. I think Attorney Coppin was talking about the existing ordinance and that residents, I believe, I don't know if it's just homeowners, businesses, but there's a 1 megawatt, might be megawatt hour. I don't know the technical term there, up to make 1 megawatt, have to have a 25 foot setback. So that's 25 feet per megawatt. So out of, you know, that's the safe minimum setback. So I thought, why not just apply that on a larger scale? You know, if we're talking about danger here, 1 megawatt requires 25 feet. 100 megawatts or larger, whatever, should require 25 times how many megawatts there are. You know, I don't know if you know chemistry, but we use moles in chemistry. 1 megawatt has X amount of danger. It might be a mole, if you, if you're familiar with that. Let's just say 400 megawatts has 400X amount of danger. So 25. So 25 feet times 400, if that would be the number that would be on a site plan, um, application. It's also a question of fairness. If a resident has to have a 25-foot setback or any landowner, why should another property owner, let's say 400 megawatts again, have 500 feet? That's one and a quarter feet per megawatt. So, but safety is paramount. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion, what's the proper setback, you know? I know the state says 300 minimum in Public Act 233, that's not the guaranteed, when it goes through that process, the state might say, that's too close to school. In fact, that's too close to two schools. You know, you can put a 50 megawatt there maybe and have 1,000 foot, but we're not going to allow that big of a system next door to of our education assets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? I entertain a motion to close public hearing?
It's public comments.
Oh, public comments, never mind, I will close public comments. Updates from other boards. I'll start, we didn't have anything since last time I spoke.
The ZDA?
Yeah.
Right.
Sandy? Training updates, I think we had a lot of them.
Training, no.
No such thing.
Information of future action items?
Um, so nothing for me really. Uh, this was just a time for us to share what's on the next agenda, which you all know will be the, uh, home occupation, rezone, ordinance, public hearing and then our, well, before that will be our, uh, special meeting. Um, me and the chair still have to meet to discuss a work plan for us. It's getting busy, don't know how to fit anything in, uh, chickens and all these things, so we'll talk, Larry, about how to squeeze some of these items in.
Mr. Chair, if we could as well, um, so after we get over the next hurdle of July 10th, it may be a benefit, um, once you've had some chance to meet with Casey, to come back to the commission and just kind of recap of all the items that you guys have discussed in the recent months that you would like to look forward to and then try to prioritize some of that and maybe, you know, we can take a half hour every meeting to try to chip away at some of that, um, as well. So maybe that would be the July 24th meeting, we can do that, but just as you guys
That was one of the things I was going to ask you about.
Yes, sir.
So.
Think you have about a half a dozen right now that we've kind of started to accumulate, so.
Okay. Planning commission comments. Amber? Want to start us off?
I don't think I have anything tonight. Thank you.
Joseph?
Uh, nothing specific. I, I have a, a wish list too that are going to add some items to our future agendas.
Okay. James?
I'm looking forward to the July 10th meeting.
I do have one thing that I would like to add to our wish list and, um, we did talk about it briefly, I think, last time when we had somebody come up and ask, and that was, um, looking at our ordinance for accessory buildings for our residents.
Okay. Yeah, that's possible.
I would like to have that added after we get past the July 10th meeting.
Yeah, and so I think it's beneficial, um, when we come to meetings, if you guys would like to amend it, give me a heads up so I can provide, um,
The material.
Yeah, Amber, if you, uh, if Bess is going to be a staple, it'd be nice so I can put the ordinance in the packet. Um, but yeah, just that's one, only thing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
See, you're really working since you got that raise.
I know.
Well.
Mr. Chair, on the, on, um, Trevor Bloomfield's point and Casey's point there, um, it would be beneficial probably for her and I if we know those items are coming forward, that we can get them in the packet ahead of time. We do try to get packets out the Thursday prior to your meeting so we can advance. Um, so not that we can't add items to the night before, but just to give you all time additionally. So just to piggyback on that, um, if you do know moving forward, we're happy to put it on there. Um, but like Casey said, we'd like to have a little bit of time to collect that information so you had, you guys as a commission have time to review prior to the meeting as well. It's not discouraging you adding items the night of, but just if you would, no items are coming forward, um, whether it be at the request of the chair, and we had that discussion last time of who puts stuff on the agenda. Um, if the commission feels inclined, email the chair and ask to have this put on and then he can coordinate with staff and when that best goes. So however, you guys as a commission would like to do that, um, moving forward, so.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I will adjourn. Thank you, everyone. And thank you for coming.
You do so.
Yeah. That's what I would think of.
I missed the letter, what did the letter say?
It's about a master plan, which was a master plan and zone. So the residential zoning policies have projected to move, how do you define a formative meeting?
Well,